Planning Commission meeting, work session for Monday, October 16. Please stand as Commissioner. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Steve, you leave us in our invocation and Commissioner Gooden will leave us in our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. May you be with each one participating in this program and guide and direct us and help us do the things we need to do for our county. We make these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you, commissioners. We have established a quorum. We have seven of eight, so we have a quorum. Nikki, is there any revisions to the agenda?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right. It seems that I have a motion approved as presented.
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor, raise your right hand. The agenda is approved. To discuss these topics, of course, tonight is a comprehensive plan. So Todd, I'll ask you to come forward and take over the meeting. One thing I do want to talk to first before Todd gets into the comprehensive plan is he did receive a request for extension of the forms or the-
Surveys, correct.
For questionnaire, the surveys.
Yes.
We had given approximately seven weeks. So I guess my question to the commission is what is your pleasure? He had been asked, I believe it was four to five weeks. My question to you is how far will that put you behind if we were to extend that far out?
It won't necessarily put us behind. The thing is the sections we're working on now are data intensive and not really reliant on the survey results. The survey results will become more important when we get into land use and special policy areas and goals, objectives, and strategies. I mean, the big changes, I mean, it's going to take time anyway just because of the number of surveys we've got so far. I mean, it'll just add to the time it takes us to compile the results.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to ask approximately how many we have.
So we have 320 online surveys and right now, sent to our office, we have 24 paper surveys, but I know Nikki had a couple more we were going to pick up tonight.
I have 100 tonight, 100, 110.
Really? That's excellent.
So I guess it's what, plus 450?
Yeah, I've turned, this is my third comprehensive plan. I don't believe we've ever had that many returns, so that's really good. So, yes.
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The extension is to, from, to when?
So the individual asked that I extended about, to about a week past Election Day.
What was the reason for the extension?
This individual has been meeting with people in the community and he's saying that people have not seen the surveys and have not had a chance to fill them out.
Oh, we didn't know what segment of community? Ask, what segment of community is this?
I'm reluctant to mention names.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary, but it was Buckingham residence.
It was Buckingham residence.
Yeah, it was within the county, yeah, I will say that much.
So I guess my question to the commission, I don't know that, you know, I don't want to not give everybody opportunity to, to give their, you know, their opinions on the county, but we got to cut it off at some point. I wouldn't want to think, in my opinion, and it's just mine, I wouldn't want to go out four or five weeks, but-
I don't either.
Perhaps maybe two weeks that-
I don't either. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't want to go out four or five weeks either, and I've been spreading surveys left, right, all through this county. It's been in the paper and we've done a really good job of advertising. The only place that I can think of that we didn't hit was the food bank and, you know, if they, if, given those, given the people there an opportunity. But we have hit, really done a good job of getting the information out there and making the surveys available. And so, four to five weeks would put us out to what, I mean, put us out to what date? A couple of weeks, I don't mind.
Four or five weeks, like Todd indicated, would put us-
After election?
Into, yes, and probably what, the second week in November?
Okay.
I guess four to five weeks from now.
Probably be the end of November.
Well, actually going up against the whole Thanksgiving.
I would think it'd be the end of November.
That's, I-
Yes, Pete, 20.
With regard to those that you feel, or let's, let's put it this way, with regard to the individual who's asking, is there, because we asked for demographic results. So if we didn't do this, if we didn't extend it, will we be, would we be shortchanging ourselves in any one particular demographic area?
Honestly, at this point, we haven't had a chance to take a dive into the surveys we've gotten, so I don't really have a good answer for you on that.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, while, while I understand, I mean, first of all, you said that the extensions are really not going to affect the endpoint for this comprehensive plan effort. My view is, you know, if we, if we do shortcut, if we do not allow the additional time, then maybe what we, when we do ask for the demographics on this survey, we might not get all the information that we'd like to have. It's up to you all, but it doesn't seem like two weeks or five weeks would make any difference.
Well, I can't really say I disagree with you. With the return that we got, it's obvious that we, the county and Todd, we've all done, you know, it's a good job getting the word out to have that many responses returned. So I'm not opposed to keeping it at the deadline, which was October the 7th. But I'm just asking, does, what is the pleasure of the commission? Would you like to say maybe, okay, we'll reopen it for two weeks? And you could also limit that to online. I mean, you've got options if you want to extend it, if you feel like it's not going to, just, it's not justified because we set a deadline, we've got to stay with it. At some point, we've got to cut it off because we've got to keep on with the comprehensive plan and not put Todd and as well as the county behind the schedule. So I'm just asking, what's the, what's the opinion of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I think, well, personally, I don't mind the extension because that's just going to give me more time to contact more people, as I've been doing. And the other thing is, we're already a week, we're already a week out. And, you know, and actually, I went online. I would like to keep online open because I presented the survey to a group of people who were concerned about Buckingham and the online was closed. And they, so I really definitely want to keep the online open. And if we're still doing more paper surveys, I still got a few copies I can pass out. So if you can process them, it's going to work to my benefit, but I'm just trying to figure out what segment of population was feeling they didn't have enough time. That, that's why I was, that's why I asked.
Yeah, I understand. I'm reluctant to say-
You don't-
Yeah, there's a reason, there's a reason I'm reluctant to say who it is.
Okay.
Let me just say, if this weren't an election year, I wouldn't have as much, much hesitation.
Running for office? My goodness.
All right.
So this person requested November 10th, is that what you said, the Friday after?
He said past Election Day. I threw out the week past Election Day because I figured that would give you, give people some time. And no, it's not Danny Allen.
All I can say is I'm so sorry. The rest of the board, all I'm going to do is hand out more copies and if you open the online back up, that works for me and I can contact these people that they can go ahead, that have it. Landowners and-
Yes, sir.
I'd move that we open it up for another two weeks on both the online and paper.
Okay.
Two weeks?
All right, two weeks. Is, any other comments?
Well, you know, he said five weeks. Five weeks is going to bring us to our next work session for the Planning Commission on the 20th of November. So if he has all the paperwork back and have everything written out.
Five weeks, we can tell you how many surveys we have, but I don't, we're not going to have, we might, we might have some partial results, maybe. But we, other, but really not much more than just telling you how many surveys we got back.
If we did it in two weeks, would you be able to tell us the next work session, some of the information?
Yeah, it takes us the end of October.
Technically, we-
Two weeks is the 30th, yeah.
And we give out our board packets a week, usually try to do a week before even your meeting, so that really only gives us about, probably a week.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Considering how far behind we already are with this comprehensive plan and the person requested it past Election Day, is that the? Okay. And you're okay, are you okay with that if the board is okay with that?
I mean, if the board, if the commission's fine with it, we'll, we'll do what you want. We don't have a problem with extending it, but we had, we had a set deadline of October 6th or 7th. And this individual contacted me after the deadline and asked if it could be, last week it was, I believe it was.
Yeah, it was last week.
Asked if it could be extended.
Okay. We're not days behind with this comp plan. We're not weeks behind and we're not really months behind. So extending it a couple of more, to the end of, after election, is okay with me.
Mr. Chairman.
That will give me time, that will give me time to go ahead and get the teens that we talked, talked about, to get their input. And I can compile that and contact some more people. So it's only going to help me, I was being obedient to our deadline.
Okay. Well, Pete, I didn't know you put it in the form of a motion.
I made a motion. If you don't want to second it, that's fine.
I didn't hear a second. I didn't realize it was a mo-
Motion was to extend it two weeks beyond the now existing deadline date.
All right. I didn't hear a second, so I guess it will, yeah.
What's your, what's your deadline date?
Well, deadline date was the 6th or 7th?
October the 6th, yes.
Of October.
Yeah.
Oh, wasn't that, let me go.
Oh, that's the 20th. That's the 20th of this month.
No, actually, I think it was the 7th or 6th or 7th.
It was the 6th. Yeah, we closed it. And so now we've closed the online survey. I guess there's any remaining paper surveys, I guess, so they come in, we can try to put them in, but on that, it's not really. Reopening it, I guess, is a better way of putting it.
Yeah, reopening it. Reopening, yeah, reopening the online. As far as the paper, I mean, we could accept any that are postmarked by the 6th. Any, any that are postmarked after that, shouldn't, but-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Did you want to put that, you've made a proposal, do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
So Pete's motion died, correct. But that means the floor is open to another motion, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. My thoughts together. We need it to go until after election. That is the request.
That's what the individual asked for.
That is the request, correct. So Election Day is the 7th. And Danny, you said 21st is our next?
20th.
The 20th is our next?
Yeah, November the 20th. That would be, that would be five weeks from now.
We can do, I, I'm okay with extending it. That's not my issue. It's just that link the time that we extend it. I am okay with going to after election.
Well, you're at this-
So I move, huh?
I'm, go ahead, I'm sorry, if you'll make a motion.
Well, I'm trying to check with the board before I put this in there because I'm feeling that the board is okay with extending it. Is that the consensus, that you're okay with extending it?
I don't care.
You don't care? All right. So all we need, I need just a date that we can put on this motion, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Right.
And I don't need it to be my personal date, that's what I'm saying.
Well, again, I sort of agree with Pete. My suggestion would be, and this, again, just my opinion, would be if we're at the 16th, we go to the end of October, that's two weeks.
That's 30th, yeah.
And then hopefully they'll have time to tabulate what they get in, maybe not completely, but it would give you, you know, time to get as many possible before November 20th work session. Now, that is just my opinion. I'm just one of seven up here, so.
I also think cutting it off at the end of October, be it the 30th or the 31st, to make it clean is a, is a good break for the extension.
Okay. Does anybody want to put that in the form of a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
All right, so you're saying two weeks from now?
Two weeks, which would be October the 30th.
30th, all right.
All right, all in, no discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. That is approved, Todd.
All right, thank you very much.
And that will be paper and online.
So you have all your information back by the 30th? And how long will it take till you get all the information gathered for, for us?
We can, I think we can at least have some partial results for the 20th. I can't promise it'll be full results, but we'll be able, we should be able to tabulate at least some and at least give you some demographics as far as the respondents. We'll get you what we can by the 20th. I just, I'm not going to promise it'll be a full summary.
Okay. All right, the meeting is now yours, Todd.
Okay. All right. So we, we have here our revisions to draft section two, and we also have some paperwork at the end of draft section two we want to go over with you. And I'm kind of going through, we have some stuff marked and you're going to, and correct me if I get any of this wrong, Lauren. So with, on page 13, what we did is we struck out that pie chart and replaced it with a table, which you see on page 14. Hopefully, the, the table is easier to read for you. And I'll give you, give you a chance to look at this. And Jamie, I don't know if, how quickly that got out in, in advance of this, this one, is it okay? So I gave you a chance to look at that.
It was often requested, the 2015 plan to include some of the data from there to compare it between the 2015 plan and this one. So we added that table.
Did you, excuse me?
Yeah, go ahead, Pete.
Did you make note of the, the difference between the carrot colored area and the female population number? Are they supposed to be different?
Yeah, so, and actually is the 44.83. He, he provided us a little bit of background, just so that y'all know, that he provided us some information for us to review over. We did review over it briefly before the meeting, so if we miss it by chance, please just let us know. Because like I said, we tried, we briefly went over it before the meeting, but didn't intensely read over it too much. Yes. So we'll review over the data, make sure, but it should be the 44.83. But I'll review over it again just to ensure that's correct. And we also added on the top of 13, the, a brief description on the median age and population.
All right. So moving on, you go to page 15, some verbiage was added for group quarters. I'll give you a chance to review that and see if you have any questions or concerns about that. Also gives an explanation of how the census determined that population will be counted.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Under education, I didn't see the Christian school in the-
Yes, but both of the private schools, the Christian school and Calvary.
And Cal, okay, I didn't see the Christian school in it.
I didn't know if private schools were typically on plans for most other counties.
It's really up to the planning commission. Some, sometimes we do include public, sometimes we do include both. So we can definitely include private schools if you'd like.
That be a homage to? Todd, I have a question for you on the education part of it. Is the, is that normal, you see, that it's such a small percentage that has college degrees when you do these plans for other counties?
Yeah, but unfortunately, based on the plans we work on, it is a smaller percentage of people who are college educated in this region.
I'm so surprised to see it was that small.
Real quickly, on page 20, you see figures 13 and 14. Just a real quick, the, the, figure 13 is for individuals because we, you don't, you don't want to assume that everyone who, who is living below the poverty level is living in, with a family or living in a group quarter. So the census breaks that out by individuals and by families. And of course, they define a family as two or more people related by birth, marriage, or adoption, living together.
Yes, Pete.
Yeah, again, I, so explain, what it says is poverty statistics individuals and poverty statistics family.
Right.
So essentially what you're saying is that figure 13 is, is strictly individuals?
Right. Now, I did want to draw your attention to page 24.
Before you do that again, I guess, yeah, I'm still a little confused, the median family income and the median household income. Explain the difference for me?
Okay, so again, so a family, again, is defined as two or more people related and living together. Whereas the household is all people living in a housing unit, they're not necessarily related. Like, use maybe a crude example, you could have a cohabitating couple, that would be a household.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, if we wanted to use this data, what do we?
Well, it gives you a comparison for, for what people are making compared with other localities in the region. And that's really the main point here, just to give you, get an idea where Buckingham County fits in, in regards to the rest of the Planning District and with the state. You're fine, you're fine. So-
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
When do we project having this document ready, like, for print?
Yeah, that is a tentative schedule. I think that sounds right. September next year is what we're targeting. But to keep in mind, that schedule is subject to change.
All right. I'm asking because under two, under the health, and when we were discussing the health facilities available in the area. And we anticipate having a doctor's office open in the county that's not listed in that, in that review. And also as far as the schools being accredited when the, this information is published. And I just want to know, how long do we have to make an edit on that, that we could actually include that there's this, another health facility open? And that maybe we've got more of our schools accredited?
Well, that would be when it comes out, I guess, because Todd and them have the ability to edit it, but depends on the timing.
Right, the document can be edited up to the point where you're ready to go to a public hearing.
All right. Thank you.
So, for page 24, this will actually came from the conversations last month. And I don't know, Lauren, you wanted to chime in on the, um, employment, unemployment data?
Yeah, so last month, y'all had mentioned that you wanted to see a comparison about what the data, um, the different classifications were. So, on page 24, it breaks apart the classifications in identifying, you know, what the previous classification on the 2015 plan was, and compared it to this one, um, what the current classification is. So, we just provided some language on that, on that in page four.
Take a look at that and let us know if you have any questions or concerns on that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Pete.
With regard to that data, as it relates to, particularly the graph, looks like there's a lot more people leaving the county to work than there is coming in. I thought it might be useful to understand, like, the kind of jobs, people. Jobs, that the people. That data available?
Um, really have to look further into it, maybe get in contact with the Employment Commission again. Um, we did, we were in contact with the Employment Commission regards to this data, because I know there's a lot of questions on that. Um, and that's what kind of leads to our conversation a little bit later, um, on the commuter data on the other two, back two pages behind section two. But we'll get into that a little bit later.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be helpful, I think that'd be very useful data. At least it would tell us in economic development what, you know, what might trigger some population growth here.
We'll look into it and see.
And sticking with the employment, uh, page 27, starting with page 27. Talk about, did we rely on data from the American Community Survey from 2021 to cover?
Cover the next page on 28.
Yes, thank you.
I know last time we went to compare some data between the 2015 plan, which was the 2008, 2012 ACS estimate. Unfortunately, with the Virginia Employment Commission, they do not compare the data, it's not compared the same way. So, we actually went to the American Community Census, which is from the US Census Bureau. Um, and we provided some data to compare between the 2015 and to the most recent 2021 ACS estimate data.
So, it's comparable?
It's more, yes, thousand, it's comparable. Also, backing up to 25 and 26, I noticed that, um, you requested that the change be color-coded to green and red. So, we did do that also on, um, chart, figure 21 and 22.
A little disturbing that all, like, all the changes are negative.
Sorry?
All the changes are negative.
Yeah. And then we can kind of talk about that chart I was talking to you about a little bit on 23, and then on the back part of section two. I know there's a little middle, like, blankish page that has a little bit of wording, commuter data for planning commission review. We provided you four other charts, um, other than the one that was on 23. And pretty much the reason we provided this is because it's from different places, um, and how they determine, how they actually do the data. For example, on, um, the top Buckingham County commuter inflows, the first chart that we have, it was actually provided from the American Community Survey. The American Community Survey, um, pretty much collects their data through a survey population. So, they do sampling surveys. So, it'll be like a segment of your actual population, so it wouldn't be your full population. It may be like a percentage versus the chart we have on the next page. For three and four chart, it is actually collected a different way. It's collected through employer, employee data. So, it's, it's administrative data is what they call it. So, they actually get that from the Unemployment Commission through the state. So, pretty much, we kind of want you to review both of these segments of data and kind of see, um, which ones you feel may be, which one you would like to have in the plan instead. So, originally on 23, it had the in commuter and out commuter data, and that is actually, um, sample-based, but we got that from the Virginia Employment Commission. Versus the ones we have at the end of section two, we have, um, the American Community Survey. Like I said, it's based off of a small sample percentage of the population versus the, um, longitudinal employer household dynamics data, which is also sample-based. So, um, we have a couple of different charts for you to review over. Um, after the CRC reviewed over internally, we have, we think that the best data probably to include in the data was actually, um, chart three and four at the end of this. But we also wanted to clue what we had before. But we thought maybe y'all could review it and kind of look over and see which one you feel would be, um, you'd feel more comfortable with in the, in the plan. And I will mention that we talked to, um, the University of Virginia Weldon Cooper Center to determine the best ways to, to find this data on this one too. He recommended the, the longitudinal employer household dynamics. He said it had a lower margin of error comparatively to the American Community Survey estimates for this particular set of data. And as you know, I noticed on the American Community Survey, um, we did include the margin of error and the percentage on that one.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. So, in all of this conversation, we're looking at a different chart versus what's on 23 and 24? In other words, when I go back to the exhibits?
Yes, so 23 and 24 is what we originally had in the plan. But, like you said, um, the charts are actually at the very end of section two. Um, we do have four different charts, and unfortunately, I didn't think about it, that you have it on your physical screen. We also have it on four different pages for you to examine at the end of section two.
Well, what do you recommend? I mean, what's, what's more accurate?
So, we feel, now, of course, not every, all data has its.
Sure.
Yeah, sampling errors and margin of errors, but we felt that comparative, looking at the data and actually comparing it to each individual segment, we see that the longitudinal employment, employer household dynamics data is, we feel more reflective of your population than, say, the other two data sets, which is the table three and four on the, um, on the actual section two.
Well, I was looking at this and quite frankly, it more like, this one aligns more closely with your blue, your blue line charts than the other one. I, I, I'm fine with that if you want to put that in there. Mr. Chairman, I, I'd rather have data that's more accurate than something that more guess-worthy.
Yep, I don't have a problem with that. Any other commissioners?
I agree.
Just unclear, we're using that third?
So, we're using tables three and four to declare on the section two, okay? We can change that. And do you like the chart, like, how we have it in section three and two, or do you like it better as the bar chart?
I think this is personal opinion. I like the numbers.
Okay.
But, I mean, you know, I'm only one person, you might want to ask the rest of the board.
I think everybody's in agreement with you.
We're in agreement?
Fine, Pete.
We'll make that change then. We'll add these two, and we'll also add the notes in the bottom to that section to kind of get the methodology behind it.
I think that was all we have for section.
That is all the changes for section two.
So, does anybody have any other, any other questions, concerns, comments about draft section two before we move to draft section three?
Okay.
Uh, I have.
Yes, go ahead, Pete.
One comment, Mr. Chairman, and I would, I would ask, I know I mentioned to you this earlier before we started the meeting, but with regard to the charts that you're showing for population, it concerns me that, uh, the one chart with regard to growth, I mean, it, it just, to me, it's misleading, alright? You know, in 2013, we had 17,300 people, and in 2050, we're going to have 17,300 people. There's not really a whole lot of growth that anything that we have here shows for the county of Buckingham. But if you look at that chart, if somebody else looked at that chart, they'd say, well, gee, we have some fairly decent growth. If they're looking at pictures, it doesn't tell you the real story. It's, that's my concern, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
If you look at the graph, it looks like it grows exponentially. It doesn't.
What page is that graph on?
Page 12.
It's right in the beginning.
For, for pages 11 and 12.
It's page, yeah, 11 and 12. Were you talking solely about figure five? Just kind of how the growth or?
Figure two, four, and five. Figure two, four, and five. I mean, if you look at the whole thing, I mean, we're flat. I mean, let's face it. And if you take a look at the, this, the difference between now, 2023, where we're still sitting at around, according to your records, what, 16,300, somewhere in that area? And 2050, you know, some 30 years down the road, we're going to grow 1,000 people, that's flat. You know, but that's not, that's not reflected in those charts.
Okay, so maybe at larger numbers to kind of show that it's flatter? Is that kind of what I'm?
Yeah, because I think if we're going to use this data, it seems to me if it was an impetus for us to do something to grow the county, you'd want to know that we're flat, we're not growing.
What do the other planning commissioners feel about the chart remaining, looking more flat instead of, like you said, like a really sharp increase? And it kind of, on that chart, I can see what you're saying.
Yeah, especially figure five, you know, it shows 400 people as, you know, this exponential, you know, look on a, on a linear graph, but that's not, again, I think if you use a different number gap on the axis.
If you put more years into your linear projection, it will show that it's basically flat. In other words, you extend your graph out and put more years in it going out to 2050.
Yeah, so you're, you want more, maybe more data on that?
Well, I'm just saying, that would, that would really show that it's, you know, your projections are that there's not much change, uh, because it's so insignificant. More, more points you have on it, the flatter the line's going to be. So, that's just a suggestion.
Well, we could do, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the projections at this point only go out to 2050, so we'd probably have to go back and collect some historical census data to, to get more points on the, on the graph.
Say, in addition, Mr. Chairman, I would, and I don't know how capable you are or how much this part of it gets involved, but, you know, with regard to the 1,000 people that intend, that are, that are estimated to come to the county over 30 years, let's assume there would be more. What would be the drivers? I mean, what was the driver behind the decrease? If you can, if, I don't know if you can tell us that. But if you could, then I'd also like to know, you know, with regard to who's estimating the growth, what their drivers are.
We can definitely reach out to the Weldon Cooper Center and ask them, you know, what, what do they look at to determine the projections? And see from there, and maybe add some language in there and determine, like, this is what the drivers are for that data.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we're going to use the data to determine whether or not we're going in the right direction, or we could improve things, I'd like to know those drivers. What makes that change?
Okay, is any other changes or suggestions in the first section here from the commissioners?
So, figure 10, uh, it looks like, so my print copy's not great, but the associate's degree, it looks like that percentage is missing as a label on the pie chart.
Okay, I noticed that a few minutes ago.
And then the point that Commissioner Gooden brought up earlier about the 2022, 2023 accreditation for a document that the Planning Commission is supposed to use for, you know, five to, five years, 10 years, however long we use this. It seems unfair to the school system to use a snapshot of just one academic year, especially coming out of COVID and some of the academic implications of that. Uh, is there any other aggregate data or average data that the Department of Education would lend that may be more helpful as an overall snapshot rather than just one year of accreditation?
They usually have multiple years. Um, with COVID, I'll have to look back if they skip the accreditation years for, I think they had 2020 and 2021, maybe they skipped over. But we definitely can look at previous year, maybe, if they don't have that data. If they do, of course, we'll include it, but, um, prior to COVID, we can kind of do a comparison if you'd like.
Yeah, I wonder if trends would be more helpful than just the snapshot of, of one particular academic year? And I guess accreditation is probably a good statistic, but there's maybe even other statistics that would be helpful for planning purposes, be it that, you know, graduation rate or, you know, whatever those.
Graduation rate? And look at some other data and see, add some more data on the school system.
Any other commissioners have anything for this first section?
One, one other quick question.
Yes, go ahead, Pete.
Uh, with regard to figure 21 and 22, I believe, yeah. And I realize this is a consolidated group of counties, so that you're looking at growth in a region, or you're looking at shrinkage in a region. Is there any data that specifically relates to Buckingham? Or, and, and I, or, well, yeah, Buckingham.
We can look further into the Virginia Employment Commission, because this is where we received this data by, and see if they have some individual.
We can check and see if they have this, have this Rock County.
Yeah, can look into that, and we can see if we can find something in particular for Buckingham, instead of just comparison.
It would be helpful, even if you couldn't find Buckingham, to at least to reduce the region. You know, maybe Buckingham, Prince Edward, and Cumberland together. I mean, it seems to me that if we're looking at, uh, unemployment and people in Buckingham, I, I don't know, I mean, I looked at how far people drive, but, uh, it just seems to me it'd be more relevant for us if we were looking at Buckingham or the very close neighbors to Buckingham.
Okay, we can look into it. I will note that this chart is for the South Central Workforce Investment Area. So, it just happens to encompass that full area, but they may have areas that may be smaller we can look at, um, at, on the Virginia employment site. So, we can look into that and see if they either have Buckingham or a smaller area.
Mr. Chairman, these are just my ideas. I don't, I mean, if the board agrees, I don't, you know.
I think everybody's fine with what you're asking, because it makes sense. If, if they're able to pull that data. Any other changes for this section or anything? Okay, Todd, I believe you can move on to the following section.
Okay, so we have the first part of draft section three for you. And hopefully, you've had a chance to look at this. I know you're seeing this for the first time, uh, but we get into housing a little bit more. And, uh, the numbers you see in figure 27 are courtesy of the US Census Bureau from the American Community Survey. See, those numbers are largely flat from 2011 to 2021. Figure 28, I think I understand what you're asking, Mr. Kapachinsky. The, the chart just has total building permits issued. No, actually, it's got it broken down, it's just, it may be, um, may, may be a little difficult to read.
I see residential, commercial, I'm sorry.
No problem. We, we could, now, if, if it's, if it is, if it is hard to read, we could put that into a table format.
No, it, it's fine. I just, it's my mistake. I should have looked closer.
That's fine, that's fine. Uh, so I'll give you a chance to peruse over that. And we also have, uh, figure 29, the year, the year how, the houses were built. That kind of gives you an idea how old the housing stock is.
It was interesting that you went back to 1939, but it doesn't show that in your chart. Is, you did that on purpose, correct?
Oh, you're talking about the housing quantity, okay. We can include it in the chart if you'd like.
Well, no, I don't, I don't understand the connection between the chart and the rhetoric. Is, is it important to know? I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, why would you put it there and not on the chart, or what difference does it make?
I think I just was trying to include more, more up-to-date data on that one, but we definitely, if, if it, we need to include it, we definitely could include 1939 on to that figure 29.
Anything that's less confusing would be helpful. So, if you don't want to do it, then don't put it in the. So, if you don't want to do it, then don't put it in the rhetoric.
Okay.
Moving on, figure thirty is related to housing units lacking indoor plumbing, and we have that in, going back to 2000. That, of course, again, is based on the American Community Survey. And we talk a little bit about government policies and the zoning ordinances. We're actually going to talk more about the zoning ordinances when we get to the land use section. We're just mentioning the ordinance here to give a point of reference. And we also talk about building inspections. And Nikki, please correct me if, that's the information we pulled from the Virginia Department of Taxation for the county's real estate tax rate. Then when we get into community facilities and services, I'll slow down for a second.
What figure is it? Are you on?
Unfortunately, we, we, we actually neglected to label to number these pages. It's, if you're in draft section three, I'm on the third page, which, at the bottom is section B, community facilities and services. Starting at the bottom of that third page, going to the top of the fourth page, we get into facilities. Under education facilities on the fourth page, going to the conversation we had earlier, we can add those two private schools to that list.
With regard to higher education, would you be willing to add Liberty University?
We can, if you'd like. I will note that there are some other universities in Lynchburg that we might want to note, too. The University of Lynchburg.
Sure.
Sweetbrier, and then Randolph College is also in Lynchburg, so I feel like.
Excellent.
You can note that also.
Is Sweetbrier still open?
Yes, they are.
Because I saw something in the press a few years ago, they were, look.
It closed briefly, but they are, they reopened.
Came in and saved the day.
Okay.
A big donor. Andy brought a good point. What about the Amish?
So, I will note in Charlotte, one, a comp plan we just finished, we're finishing up right now, Charlotte County, they have a similar Amish population. They did, we did find some Amish data related to them from, there's a university in Pennsylvania that's literally, that's all they do is study Amish populations. We did find some data on that and put it in their comp plan. If y'all were interested in something like that, we can explore that.
It's growing here.
Yeah, I, I think it'd probably be worthwhile, because it is a growing population and all indications are it's continuing to grow. I know we have approved, Nikki, can you recall, I think, three? I can think of three.
At least three or four.
Yeah, schools already in Buckingham. Now, they're very small, of course, but they are, they are schools.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, Nikki may be able to provide you some of that information, or at least for the school applications that were approved.
We'll work with the county, and then we'll also reach out to the professor from, like I said, there's a Pennsylvania college that literally dedicated to this. They get all their data out of Amish newspapers, because it's, they have an option pretty much to submit what, how many people are in their population and population details for them to that newspaper for them to publish. So, we can reach out to, you know, obviously, work with county staff and reach out to that individual about that.
Okay, I'd be, I think it'd be very helpful. Todd, on the, just skipping forward to the, industrial park for the county. You've got a hundred and sixty acres.
Let's see, yeah.
I think it's only, what, now, a hundred and twenty-seven remaining? Something like that.
Four, okay, so we need to make that change, okay?
Danny, you recall, is it a hundred and twenty-seven?
I'm sorry, I missed.
Left in the industrial park or the NC one neighborhood. It's a hundred and twenty-seven, is that saying?
Close, I know the words are one twenty-five, we were talking about selling, but that has some left out of it, so. A little bit more in there. What do you, I mean, on that picture, how many acres do you have there? Missed it. Okay? How many acres?
It says one sixty, yeah.
Heartland Regional Industrial Park contains approximately four hundred acres.
Yeah, that's the regional one.
Nikki.
Heartland.
Okay. I'll change that map also.
Okay.
And the other part about this, we just referenced the Heartland Industrial Park because it is a regional park which Buckingham participates in. I didn't actually include a map on this because the park itself is not located in Buckingham County. Unless anyone feels differently, I'll just, I wasn't planning to include a map of that particular park, just the county's industrial park.
How's the commission feel? I don't know that it would be necessary, being as that key field, so. Yeah, I don't know, well, I guess you make reference because we do.
Because the county participates in it.
Yeah, we're in cooperation with them, participate with them.
Well, let me ask a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
If that park were developed, would we share the revenue?
Now, that I can't answer. Might have to take somebody else.
Well, I, I want, I want to say yes, but I would have to get a definitive answer on that.
Definitely.
I think then the answer is if we would share in the revenue.
Right.
Then we should include in our comp plan. But if we don't, then it's, it's really not significant to us.
What we can do is we can reach out to the Heartland Authority and see if they can, that's who kind of is over top of the regional business park, and see if they can give us some information on that.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to this map, does this include or exclude the ten acres that are, that have already been?
You referring to the map of our, our park?
Yeah, I'm talking about our park.
I think Nikki's already pointed out that.
Yeah, she gave me. School at this point, so it does not include that? Okay. Okay. And that's what, that's, is that's what gives us the net of a hundred and twenty-three?
I think it's around one twenty-four point five one, but I could be, I think it's around.
That's a good guess.
Some of those little numbers.
Yeah, by the time you take all that, yeah, puts it back down.
The rent free in my head.
Okay, thank you.
Going on to health care. You know, we're just listing facilities that are approximately sixty miles from the Buckingham County line.
And then this, Mr. Chairman, I'm thinking, then this paragraph is going to change.
You mean the second one where it talks about the former Buckingham? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah, you're right. That's, I drive by that every day, so it's, I'm keeping an eye on that, but you're right, that is most likely going to change by the time we're done.
We also have the inclusion now of Troublesome Creek Medicine.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the note that these, these hospitals that you've mentioned are approximately sixty miles away, you said from the, the Buckingham border. So, I'm thinking, you know, places like St. Mary's out in Richmond. Normally, I'd, I'd think that that would be more than sixty miles, but, I mean, again, I'm, I'm not sure from the Buckingham border. So, are, is that a, is that just an approximate, or is that something?
Approximate.
That's fine.
These are also usually ones that the citizens utilize too, right, Todd?
Well, we, we haven't actually gotten statistics on, on who uses them. We're just basing it on approximate location from the county.
Right, okay. Well, I, I can know from experience, I know that quite a few of these are used by Buckingham citizen.
Then we go down to, go ahead.
Then, does that put the VA?
Yeah. It probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have.
I know there's a large VA population, myself included.
It probably would be good to include the Maguires.
Now, I've only got the one nursing home listed. That's the only one I'm aware of. Is that correct? Talk about the libraries. I'll give you a chance to peruse the next page. We start right at the libraries and go to the museum. Religious facilities, too numerous to mention each one individually, so we kind of tried to summarize that. And then talk a little bit about the Live Truth Universal Shrine, just because it does attract visitors from, from outside the area. I, I know someone who used to go there when they were able to travel.
Todd, there is an addition to museums. I think Spencer Adams, isn't that? Not just the Housewright Museum?
Spencer Adams, you said?
Is it the Adams family?
Todd, in your list of the hospital facilities, I don't, I don't see, you got reference Martha Jefferson Hospital here, but not in the list, or either, I'm not reading it correctly.
Hold on a second. Centaur Martha Jefferson Hospital.
Am I missing that in the list of?
The second one.
Second bullet point.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry. My fault.
No problem.
I was looking for Martha, not Centaur. Yes, ma'am.
Where would the historic Buckingham Village fall with this?
You're not going to see that in this part. We, we are going to have a section, part of this section talking about historical resources, so it would fall in there. We just haven't, we haven't gotten that far yet.
All right, I just saw museum and.
There are religious facilities. Is it worth noting the Nazarene camp as a thing? It attracts different groups of people as well?
And they do, so probably, probably would be well served to have it.
Underwater sewer service, sewer service, is that, any issues, questions about what we have there? We try to keep that fairly brief.
Maybe a question for Nikki. Is there a map that shows where this public sewer starts and ends?
Yes, we do have a map of the utility.
Is that in the current comp plan anywhere?
I don't think that it is, but I can work with Daniel Queen and Carl Carter if that would be something that you'd like to place with us.
As a commission, I think that would be helpful. A lot of times when we're talking about economic development, to see what properties are, would be of interest just because of that access.
We, we had some shapefile data of the lines from VEDP, but that data is at least ten to twelve years old, so I'm not sure how reliable it is.
I can get that to Todd, though.
Yes, I think it would be very helpful because it would, not only for the planning commission to see, but also the citizens to see where available sewer water is. Because we will base some of our decisions farther into based on that, so I think it's very valid.
Now, the solid waste collection, recycling, what we don't note on here is which of these, these, these stations are manned, because I know some of these are manned and some of these are not.
I don't know that that would be that important, as long as you got those located as you do.
And just so you know, I did reach out to Lynn Hill a couple of weeks ago to get him to update, because the, the previous plan had nine facilities mapped out, and two of those have been closed down. Then law enforcement and public safety. Just double-check those numbers in there we have for, for personnel, for the sheriff's office. Let us know if those don't look right. And the fire and rescue, that first paragraph there, that number thirty-five plus three active volunteers, that was provided to us by the county, county's Department of Emergency Services. And you notice at the bottom of that page, we referenced the county's five-year strategic plan for the fire and rescue services. That was also provided by the Department of Emergency Services. And you notice that we don't, we don't have a map twenty-two in there for dry hydrants. That's because I reached out to the Department of Forestry to get some updated data for mapping. I actually did receive that at the end of last week, so by the next time we meet, I will actually have a map twenty-two in there with updated locations for dry hydrants. But it's not in there this time. And we get into telecommunications, internet access, that links to the last paragraph. I see a typo there, we'll take care of that. We referenced Mid-Atlantic Broadband, and also the federal funding that Firefly and CEVAC received, and also the state VODI funding that was received with, with Firefly. And then you'll, on map twenty-three on that last page, that, that data is, was provided us by Mid-Atlantic Broadband, and that was actually provided to me in the last couple of weeks. So, that's, that map is based on the most recent up-to-date data that Mid-Atlantic has. And that map is really only to, to cover Mid-Atlantic's fiber routes, so just, just for everyone's benefit. That's what we have so far. That's what we have so far in draft section three, want to present that to the group for their review. Did anybody have any other questions or comments on what we presented to you on draft section three?
I don't believe any of the commissioners have anything at this time, Todd.
Well, yeah. I was kind of looking at all those things while y'all were talking, but no. Like it's the trash can, more or less. Couple of locations ain't exactly right.
You're talking about on the map?
Well, the map and in the writing, says the Gravel Hill Recycling Center. It's located on sixty Gravel Hill Road, and that's no, that's right fifteen. But it's six seventeen, it turns off right there.
Right, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, I can tweak the location a little bit, but I know what you're talking about, I mean, it's right off of fifteen there on Gravel Hill Road.
Okay, then, then this one says James Madison Recycle, that's on Wingo Road, four thirty-four. It's not on James Madison. I don't know what, you know, if you read the directions and all, that's what it comes up with.
Well, again, I, I ran this by Lynn Hill, I can, I can run this by him again, ask him to double check and see if we did get something wrong there.
I think it's missing the Dillwyn site.
Yeah, that's the one.
Number five, it's a.
That's the one, it's the site for two thousand and one Madison.
But then there's another one on South James Madison, I think that's the one at Bates Market.
Oh, did I do that wrong, I'm sorry?
Should I, should I add some text?
I was looking for the one in Dillwyn, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, number five is the one just outside of Dillwyn. So I'm wondering if maybe, would it alleviate confusion if I were to number, instead of have bullet points for those sites, number them and put them in order to correspond with the map, would that make things a little less confusing?
Yeah, I think that would certainly simplify a little bit.
Yeah, on, on the map, it's back, three and five are backwards, but then during, in the bullet points, you don't have the Dillwyn site listed at all.
Right.
Oh, you're right, okay.
I apologize, the legend is correct.
Oh, you're right, there are, we only have six of them listed.
But it's just not listed in the bullet point.
Okay, well, I left that out of the list.
And then law enforcement and public safety and fire and rescue, so there's a mention of Charlotte County in here, about the VSP and traffic enforcement investigative support for Charlotte, so that's probably a copy and paste.
Let me see.
And then, it talks about the employment of thirty citizens, I'm not sure they're all citizens, but we'll get a better count for the sheriff's office, and then while we're doing that, I'll just make sure that what's listed for fire and rescue or EMS is, is correct as well.
Okay.
Back to the industrial park, one twenty-five point two eight acres, and that's pretty much the forest where it's got wood at.
What was the number again, one twenty-five?
One twenty-five point two eight.
Two eight, okay.
And that's just showing the wood, the other part over there, Nikki was telling you, that's taken off, that's another twenty-two acres.
Right.
With the hotel and the drop the pool is.
For the telecommunications section, the map of Mid-Atlantic Broadband. If there is a map that exists that shows overall coverage of the county to who has access to broadband, I think that would be more helpful than just a snapshot of Mid-Atlantic broadband.
I want to say that Firefly has one on their website.
Well, yeah, I was about to say, we might be able to do.
We can reach out to them, what do you think?
Actually, might be able to find it through DHCD, since they got a, since they got a broadband, a VODI grant.
That would just include the VODI program sites?
That I'm not sure of.
I think it wouldn't include.
We're working on the connects.
I don't think that would include the, the funding.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll see if we can get on that.
All right, Teague, I may have some helpful information on the programs in the county also.
Okay. Any other revisions from the commissioners for this section? Okay. I think we're okay with what you got with these proposed changes we've already talked about.
So what we'll do is we'll come back next month with those changes, and at least some sort of update on these surveys and the rest of draft section three, which will, that'll include, among other things, information on climate, information on natural resources, historic resources, what have you.
And that will be November the twentieth, at six o'clock.
November twenty?
Can you believe you'll have all the information then?
That is what we're targeting.
Okay.
Chairman, how many, what, what's remaining, I mean, what, can you tell us the path forward at this point in time?
Well, as far as what's remaining. Finishing up draft section three, it's, like I said, it's going to be some more, some more inventory, it's going to, we're going to have information on soils, mineral types in the county, we'll, we'll have a subwatersheds for you, we'll have watersheds, we'll have climate data, historic resources. And I'm sure I'm leaving something out, but basically it'll be the rest of the county's inventory, and in draft section four, we kind of, we decided to split that out just because of the amount of information. Draft section four is going to be transportation.
And will that include the rails, the rails and the, and the roads?
Okay. Yeah. So depending, I don't know if we'll be, have time next month to get into draft section four, but that will, we'll plan to have the changes of draft section two and what we did draft section three, and I, well, I plan to have the entirety of draft section three for you next time.
And how many sections in total we have here?
So, see, four is transportation, five will be land use, six will be special policy areas, seven, goals, objectives and strategies, and eight will be an implementation plan, so eight.
Okay, so, at any point in time, do we, zoning doesn't come up in this, right, we just, we're looking at concepts.
We'll, we'll reference zoning in the land use section, just, at least we're planning to, just to give. We feel that if you reference the zoning ordinances, it gives you an idea what the county allows as far as land use, but that's about the extent of what we're going to cover as far as zoning.
So if we wanted to discuss, as an example, a new zoning area or a new zoning description, we wouldn't do that here, right?
It, it would not technically be done in, in the discussion with the comprehensive plan, but yes, it would sort of tie with it because what these surveys, although they're not the final thought, they are a very valuable too, because you get input from the residents of the county. So, yes, we'll look at that, and then if there is a zoning change, if we decide to do that, we will have to do that to put it into the comprehensive plan prior to the completion of it. Because you're either creating a new zone or deleting one or whatever you decide, you know.
The reason, what prompts his question, Mr. Chairman, is the fact that in the county, probably since the last, which is different, since the last comprehensive plan, we really, in the last few sessions anyway, have been focusing on solar farms in the county. Much more so than what happened in the, in the previous comp plan. In fact, it's, it's been such a subject, I'm wondering whether or not it really needs, needs some attention to the comp plan all by itself, in other words, should we really be considering zoning specific property strictly for solar farms? Particularly given the, the length of time those panels will be occupying that, that soil and the amount of land that'll be sacrificed in order to do those farms in the county, and they do become an economic driver for us, so I'm wondering whether or not it ought to be, there ought to be some sort of a separate discussion on them.
It, it could, it would need to be that way, and then if a decision is made to create a new zoning district, it would then have to be put into the comprehensive plan, so at some point when we get into that, which will be basically what January or February, I assume.
Probably, yeah.
When we, by that point, we'll also have the surveys back, the input from those. So then, yes, what we may have to do is schedule some time to, to, to talk about that at that point, we might work an hour on the comprehensive plan and take thirty minutes, you know, in a work session to start, oops, start talking about that and whatever we, you know, if we got, if that's a direction we want to go or not, so.
So if we do decide that is a direction we want to go, and we talk about it in January, that'll still be enough time for him to put it into the comprehensive plan?
It, it should be. Now, any changes you make like that would of course have to be a public hearing.
Right.
What would possibly happen is if we were scheduled, we're hoping to complete, Todd, and I'm not sure, next May, June?
I think it was September.
I was thinking it was next May or June, but I may be wrong on that.
Remember, that's a tentative schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, typically it's, we, we plan eighteen months, but doesn't mean we're going to be done in eighteen months.
Right. Gotcha, so hopefully, yes, if we were to make a decision, want to create a new zoning district, we could get, of course, it has to go through a public hearing, has to go through the board supervisors, and then if we don't get it concluded in time for the completion of this, the comprehensive plan can be changed at any time, added or whatever, so we could do that subsequent to or following the completion of it if we don't have it in time, you know, if it's a couple of months after, we could always change it, the comprehensive plan can be changed. It's, it's a, a living document, and you know, if you need to change it at some point, the county decides to do that, we have the authority to do that, so.
So when we get into the section on land uses, that's when a discussion would come forward?
If, if you're leaning, if your idea is to create perhaps another district to directly talk about solar farm, that would be the time. It, it wouldn't be so much in the work session with the comprehensive plan, it would have to be some time scheduled, either after that, or either maybe perhaps another work session.
Yeah, because the problem I'm having is that it's becoming an economic driver in the county. And if it doesn't get mentioned at all in the comprehensive plan, I think we're overlooking it.
Well, if.
To me, that there ought to be something, even if you don't have a separate zone, it's such a significant situation for us. Particularly if we're going to end up using three, four, five percent of our county to do it, it seems to me that it, it deserves some kind of rhetoric somewhere.
We definitely intend to mention to cover solar in the plan. I mean, our, our intent at this point is to actually cover it not only in the land use section, but also in special policy areas. And just so you know, special policy areas, we're, we're going to take a few of the issues from from the, from the goals, objectives and strategies, it basically issues are identified in the community meeting and the surveys and discuss those in more, in more depth. And solar will definitely be one of those, and we'll also cover solar in the goals, objectives and strategies.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
But to answer your question, Pete, it'll be addressed, you know, in some form or fashion. If we don't make, if we don't create a separate district, we'll certainly be defined a lot better in a comprehensive plan.
It'd be helpful.
Okay, any other commissioners have anything for Todd before he exits? Okay, thanks, Todd, we'll see you on November twenty. All right, that brings us to commission, matters of concern, do any of the commissioners have anything they need to talk about? All right, if not, do I have the motion to adjourn?
移到
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned, thank you very much.